Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Note the attendance, please. We have nobody for the open forum? Then I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and turn toward the flag.
(audience clapping) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a true reason and justice for all.
Oh, it's so nice to have all those voices behind us here, wasn't it?
Impression.
Okay, at this time, I would ask the council's approval of the Special City Council HRA and Planning Commission Work Session of March 17th, 2014, the Special City Council Closed Executive Session of March 17th, 2014, the Special City Council Meeting of March 25th, 2014, and the Special City Council Work Session of March 25th, 2014, and the Regular City Council Meeting of March 25th, 2014.
Second.
Also some favors signified by aye.
Aye.
Close. We want to get to hear the songs. Here's our choir from the STEM RDLS 5th graders. And would you please, Kim, would you go over to the mic to introduce this lovely choir and tell us what you're going to sing? We're so excited to have you here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Gotel. This is the 5th grade RDLS, our STEM combined choir. We meet once a week from 2:30 to 3:30, and Mrs. Miles and I lead this together. We're going to sing three numbers for you. We'll open with a patriotic song and Sign Language of America, and then we will go into another song of peace, and finally, one with a rousing version of Joshua Fitt the Battle of Jericho combined with Go Down Moses. Thank you.
(singing)
(singing)
Wow. That's incredible. Incredible. (music) Wow. That's incredible. Amazing. (music) Wow. That's incredible. Incredible. 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 (music) Wow. That's incredible. Incredible.[594.53]
And it's a great community to be part of.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I really believe in your work. Um, next, we have another great organization, Community Involvement Program, and it's Jolene, and I won't, Boyd, I won't butcher the other hyphenated name, you can say it for us.
That's fine. My name is Jolene Thibodeau Boyd, and I'm the Director of our Employment Services at Community Involvement Programs, and I want to thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, Community Involvement Programs has been around since nineteen seventy-one, and our primary focus is providing services to adults with disabilities. When we first started, we focused just on folks with about mental disabilities, but we've expanded our services to people with mental illness, uh, brain injury, physical disability, that sort of thing. Um, in my department and with the funds that we receive from the city of Richfield, we're really focusing on, uh, providing paid internships to young adults who live in Richfield at small businesses in the city of Richfield.
Oh, how nice.
So, um, one of the things that sets us apart from a lot of other provider organizations like ours is that we really focus on getting to know the individual and finding jobs that are really a good fit for them, so that, um, they can maintain those jobs over a longer period of time. A lot of the young adults that come to our services come right out of the transition program here in Richfield as well, and many of them haven't had much opportunity to work. Um, and a lot of times, people with disabilities aren't given that opportunity. So, our staff really go out and they use the funds from the city to, uh, facilitate relationships between those individuals who live in Richfield and small businesses. In Richfield, they get paid internships. Our goal is, or our hope is, that that will turn into long-term employment for people. Doesn't always work. Um, but it does still give that opportunity for businesses to get that exposure to people with disabilities that they might not otherwise get. Um, so I just wanted to share one story, I actually just heard about this today. Um, with our, the funds that, that we were awarded this year already, we have one young woman who, um, is, has an interview set up at Wolf Central, um, which is a fairly new business here in Richfield on Penn Avenue. Um, they're a doggy daycare.
Yep.
And this young woman really, um, likes animals, and the business, um, has just been around since two thousand twelve, so they don't have a lot of extra operating capital, but they're really looking to expand their business. So this will give an opportunity both for this young woman to have a paid work opportunity and to give the business a chance to expand as well. So, thank you very much, we appreciate your funds.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you worthwhile again. Thank you so much. Um, and the last organization for this, this slate of organizations that helps us is Veep, Volunteers Enlisted to Assist People, and Scott Hovedos is here from Veep to talk about what they do and how they serve our community.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Um, I'm Scott Visdis, I'm the Program Director at Veep, and, um, uh, Richfield resident of nearly twenty years now. It's really nice to be here. Um, I think a lot of you already know Veep was founded by churches in Richfield forty years ago to help neighbors in need. Uh, they were looking for a way to support low-income families, and they created the organization as an all-volunteer organization. Uh, it expanded, uh, to include Bloomington, Edina, and South Minne- Minneapolis, a portion of that shortly after. Forty years later, we're still dedicated to providing assistance to low-income households in our area, and to have that help come from the community, from other neighbors. It is, the intent is to promote stability and to ensure that low-income households manage their situation without falling into larger problems, that a family has access to nutritious foods, that a senior citizen can get to her dialysis appointments, uh, that a child will get school supplies if he needs to thrive in school. In two thousand thirteen, more than sixteen hundred Richfield households, totally more than five thousand five hundred individuals, came to Veep for at least one of our four main programs. Uh, food, children and youth services, transportation, or social services, which is the one I'll focus on the most here because it's been the, uh, focus of the support from the city of Richfield in recent years. The social services program includes four licensed social workers who, put it simply, help in two main ways for folks. Last year, they provided about eight thousand ser- services, such as needs assessments, referrals, case management, all designed to help low-income household manage their situation by connecting to needed resources. Uh, one of the things that's helped us carry out this, this, uh, activity is that in January we moved into a new building, which we now share with Ennis County's, uh, Human Service South Regional Hub, and that's allowed for us, uh, a great combination of public and private access for low-income families. They can come in one visit and kind of take care of, of multiple needs at, at one time, whether it's from, from a private nonprofit like us or the, or the county. The second thing the social service program does is to provide emergency financial assistance. Uh, it's a critical moment of one-time support, can be as simple as a bus pass to help someone get to a job interview, or it can be several hundred dollars to help with rent, utilities, car repairs, some kind of a hole that the person's fallen into and needs a little help to get out of. In two thousand thirteen, a one hundred and fifty-one Richfield households received emergency assistance for this program totaling about sixty thousand dollars.
Wow.
And this really does make the difference between stability and crisis for family. It prevents the eviction that might lead to homelessness, it, it lets the car get repaired that, that is the lifeline to a job and, and makes sure people stay employed, and it really does create the stability for, for Richfield residents. We added one new service in this program in two thousand thirteen, which we call our Housing Assistance Towards Stability, or HATS. It's designed for a little bit longer-term assistance, three to six months, generally due to medical issues. Good example is someone who has had surgery and now won't be able to work for a couple of months, or they've become eligible for Social Security Disability, but it's going to take a couple of months for the application to work its way through the system. And, uh, and so we'll work with these folks for a little bit longer than we usually do and provide a little bit more case, intensive case management. Seven of the first seventeen households that we worked with in the HATS program were from Richfield. Uh, we're grateful for the city's support and working with you because, because we seek to rally the entire community, uh, in support of our neighbors. Public, private, uh, churches, businesses, civics group, civic groups, individuals as volunteers, donors, whatever. And, uh, with this support that we received from the city, not only did it provide tangential, tangible support that allowed us to, to help low-income residents, but it also kind of signaled the importance of kind of a community-based response to neighbors in need and helping, uh, everyone kind of chipping in and making sure that we have a, a stable and, uh, and, and, uh, great place to live. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. That's great. So, um, I'm sure next time, uh, one of these other times, we'll have a few more of the organizations in, but that was really great to hear about what they do and find out what these organizations provide for Richfield. Thank you for bringing those reports in to us, that was, that was very insightful. The next is a presentation of a proclamation designating Earth Day Arbor Month. And I believe we have a presentation, but I also have a proclamation. Do you want me to read this first? Okay. Karen. Hi. Hi, Mayor. Just don't make me sing. Well, who would beat those kids?
Save, save the kids.
Um, Earth Day Arbor Day Month Proclamation. Whereas Earth Day is celebrated nationwide on Tuesday, April twenty-second, to bring awareness about the need to care for the environment. And whereas May has been designated as Arbor Month in Minnesota in order to promote the value in planting of trees, and whereas Richfield's Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain, and manage the health of Richfield urban forest, and whereas trees and forests provide a natural play environment that encourages exploration, creativity, and activity. And whereas Wood Lake Nature Center honors Earth Day and Arbor Month through their weakened environmental-themed activities in April and May, including removing invasive plant species, cleaning up the park, and leading educational programs about the plants, animals, and water at Wood Lake. And whereas the community will join together to participate in Richfield Park Cleanup Day on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, to donate good steward, to demonstrate good stewardship of the green spaces and natural resources. And whereas the Urban Wildlife Half Marathon and Five K celebrate its twelfth year, wow, that's wonderful, of funding and longstanding environmental education program for Richfield youth and uses only materials that are recyclable, compostable, or reusable. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Richfield is committed to promoting the values of Earth Day and Arbor Month, and invites its citizens to celebrate the spirit of Earth Day and Arbor Month throughout the year by making environmentally responsible choices in their lives. Proclaim this eighth day of April, two thousand fourteen, and signed by Debbie Gotow, the mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And your presentation.
Show us what you do so great at Wood Lake. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council and citizens, it's a privilege to be, um, in my twenty-third year of celebrating Earth Day every day at Wood Lake Nature Center. I'm Karen Schrag, and, um, it really is a privilege, just totally is. Is this now up on the screen? There we go. Um, every day is Earth Day, and what is Earth Day about? Well, it's about educating about plants and animals, it's about recycling, planting trees, as Mayor mentioned, um, conserving resources, about giving, uh, examples, living by example as much as we possibly can, habitat protection, species conservation, connecting people to nature, and quiet contemplation, and so much more. So, it is all about being able to do that in the space of a hundred and fifty acres sandwiched between thirty-five W, sixty-sixth Street, and Lyndale. Those are the themes of Wood Lake's year-round activities. Um, we have a new prairie that's ten acres that has been established, it was on an old, um, site where we put a lot of our soil from the dredging project we did from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-eight. Now it's a beautiful prairie. We have ski trails that help connect people to nature. We, uh, had a fabulous year, I know those of you who don't like winter aren't going to like this, but boy, it was great for, for skiing and great for people getting out, and they had a wonderful, wonderful time. In fact, I think we just saw the last of our snow disappear today. Uh, we teach all fifth graders in Richfield how to ski, and it's just great, especially when you see kids whose families just came here from a country you know never had snow, learn how to do that. So it's just a lot of fun doing that. We teach, we have private lessons, we do all kinds of things, just getting people out year-round in, at Wood Lake. Uh, invasive species pulling, um, our top invasive species, buckthorn would be number one, we also have purple loose stripe, we have garlic mustard, and now the new one on the block, look out for spotted knappweed, that's coming. I've seen it in our parking lot, all these things take over, and we try very hard to at least keep them under control. I call it job security. We'll never get rid of it. There's some fifth graders pulling buckthorn, they really like that, we call that service learning, because child labor laws don't permit us to call it slavery. So, come on, kids, we're going to go pull all buckthorn. Oh yeah, it's fun, it's learning! And, uh, they do all our work for us and they don't charge us, so I don't know what you want to call that, but, uh, we, we're glad that the schools let us use their fifth graders to pull a lot of buckthorn every fall. We do a lot of hands-on activities, uh, teach about stewardship, and just showing a lot of pictures about kids having a good time. It ends up being their favorite activity, go figure, the parents complain they can't get them to do any work at home. Wildlife education, uh, we, every time there's an invasion of a new species, you can't believe the phone calls we get, um, opossum, and hawks, and fox, and, um, when we talk a lot about snakes and things, it's amazing how disconnected people are getting with, uh, wildlife, and our job is to kind of keep everyone calm and tell them it's going to be okay. I get a good lot of practice doing that with my sister in Bath, she wouldn't believe we're in the same family. Volunteer projects and park cleanups, um, we do a lot, a lot of, um, corporations like to come in, Best Buy comes in every year and does a major cleanup, which is great, especially this time of year when everything is, um, you know, just refining all that stuff that's been left over and under the snow. And our nature activities, we do, just do a lot of, um, animal life, we have forty-five different programs we do year-round, on average, a different program every Sunday, and it's just a lot of fun to engage the public in that. Quiet contemplation, we have a lot of, we have three different, um, overlooks where people can come and just sit and relax, um, most of our benches are dedicated in memoriam to someone, so it's become a very private and special place for people who have their loved ones memorialized in a bench. So, thank you very much. Hope you'll all, see you all at the Friends at Wood Lake Dinner on April twenty-fifth. We do have our community garden sign-up this week as well, and thank you very much for this, we'll frame this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to comment that I was actually, I do my mayor's office hours there until May, so I'll have one more there. And the last mayor's office hours, I had a couple of, uh, folks there, it was lovely to see them. Okay.
Thank you.
That was, that was lovely, um, to, to have people come to the mayor's office hours, but we saw the coyote, and he caught himself some breakfast, he got rid of one of those squirrels, and he could certainly do a few in my ear, um, bunny rabbits as well, so, um, it, it was, it was interesting to see, uh, that coyote looked very well-fed, so he's having a heyday in there. I don't know, how many coyotes do we have in there?
We think right now we have four.
Oh, really?
Yeah, two, two adults and two juveniles.
This was an adult.
We haven't had any word, and it's a little early yet to determine if they've had any, any pups yet.
Mm-hmm. So, we need some predators for some of them.
We do. It's, it's a good, it's an important balancing act.
Yes.
It's important, depends if you've got, you know, whether you've got a gardener, whether you're rab, you have rabbits or too many squirrels, but it's a good balancing act.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, council discussion, hats off to hometown hits. Pat Elliott?
You know, I don't have much here on, I think, in keeping with the contemplation and nature and everything. With the snow being gone, and it, I think everybody, get out of your house, walk your neighborhoods, re-acquaint with your neighbors, and while you're doing that, go take a look around the neighborhood, you know, we've had a, a ton of snow and, and we had things buried in layers this winter. And it, it doesn't hurt anybody when you're out doing your morning constitutional walker in the afternoon, you see something, pick it up. I think, uh, if we're all out walking for about the next ta- ten days, this, uh, Richfield's going to be the most beautiful community that it always is, but everybody lends a hand, picks it up, and, and we can all enjoy the outdoors again.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Council member?
Well, I've been gone for the past fourteen days, so I'm just trying to, I mean, I got from the airport here. That's how close.
You know, you have all the rest of the agenda items.
Well, good, good, thank you. Uh, but, it's been, it's great to be back home, I tell you, I, I would even lo- have loved it if we'd have had five or ten feet of snow. Because, you know, I mean, you go to Mexico and oh, there is the sun and the beach, you know.
Oh, please.
No, but, uh, and I was going to mention, Karen, thank you for, for mentioning the, the fowl, um, dinner. Um, you know, uh, Wood Lake is, is not only part of our community and part of our education and our kids, and, but it's a regional park, and so many of us really enjoy it, uh, on a, sometimes on a weekly basis or, or whatever, but, you know, when you, when you go to the dinner, you see a lot of folks there that come from other communities, and they're there to support the nature center. And I really am appreciative, because some of the folks that apply to serve on the board are not just Richfield residents, we have other folks that, that apply and are part of the board. And, uh, Jim and Karen, you know, I really, hats off to you because you really have made that what it is. You know, we, we just, we can't have a park to be natural, leave it go at that, we have to have committed folks that run it, believe in it, and just make it, make it a, a beautiful event for, for those of us that live in our, in our city. And, and let's support it, let's go to the dinner, call Wood Lake Nature Center, and, and, um, stop by, pay your money, go to the dinner, there's going to be, who's going to be the, the speaker, Karen?
On mammals, which includes coyotes, I thought it was an appropriate thing for him to do.
Oh, great, great.
He's huge, he's great.
It's a lot of fun too, because you have a lot of, you have a silent auction, you have a lot of, um...
And this year, we're auctioning Penn Cycle, uh, Richfield donated a, a kid's bike, and so for a dollar you can, uh, donate a chance and see if you can win that children's bike, so that's going to be new this year. And Mike Binkley from WCCO TV is going to be our emcee, he came and spent an hour and a half with me because he wanted to know Wood Lake so he could be the emcee, I thought that was really neat.
That's really nice.
Good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So you're passing those out to us?
Yes, I'm passing these out, and I'm challenging you to see how many new folks we can bring to the dinner, okay?
All right.
Yeah. I mean, I'm at least start...
I've done a table, I've done a table.
Okay, how many do you want, Pat?
That's a loaded question.
And if you cannot go, you can send in your check, and that would be greatly appreciated.
Nice donation, or let somebody else go?
Absolutely.
Yes, wonderful, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, I, I will get to my, uh, to my calls and letters and emails, uh, in a couple of days or so. Thank you.
I just want to say that I got up on the, on the email and looked at the Richfield Connect video that was forwarded to the council, and, and council, if you haven't done it yet, it, it just came, go do that. This was a really, really good video about the Rich, I did the Richfield Connect, because I want to see what's being set up on there, and, and this is supposed to be an interaction between staff, council, and residents, and it's, it's a really great tool, and they go through how to get on there, it's really easy to get up on there and sign up, but the video is very nice, and it's very instructive, and, uh, it's fun, and I, and recognize Pam Dymetranko's voice over there. Um, she did an excellent job, and I'm hoping a lot more people sign up because I'm really looking forward to seeing what kind of conversations we get going on there. And I know for some folks, certain age groups, that's really the, the tool that they use to connect with things. So, I think that's a great tool, and I'm looking forward to seeing the conversations on there. Please, download the video and, and go to the Richfield Connect button, you'll see that, it's really cool. Councilmember Sandel?
Thank you. I have three things, um, today. The first one is just an announcement, our Richfield Community Services is sponsoring an egg scramble, which we've done every year in a row, as far as I'm aware. It will be held this Saturday, April twelfth, at ten AM at Augsburg Park, and you can either, um, register at the Richfield Community Center, go online, or call eight-six-one-nine-three-eight-five. And it's open for kids, and it, it used to be starting at three and up, and now they actually have a one and two-year-old toddler program, so...
Wow.
That sounds like a lot of fun for the kids.
Yes.
Yeah, so please do, and there are, there are some prizes in addition to just the fun of participating. So that's the fun one. Um, and then I have my every-other-week letter, I think, from Mr. Osie, who has spoken to us about garbage pickup, if you'll recall, he came and talked to us, and he keeps me informed every week, and I'm just sharing this with the council, and then to check with staff to see where we are on the, the topic. He's telling me here on March twenty-fifth that he had another ten trucks passed his house, um, and only one of them was, uh, natural gas, and the same thing he's saying April eighth, his letter was, um, received in my office, April first was the date, and he was, had another ten trucks going by his house, and again, only one was natural gas, and he's wondering what we're doing about it. So I'm bringing that up, and I don't know, staff will have to let us know where the garbage discussion is, um, in terms of looking at single-source, um, and trying to be conservation-minded, and we'll go from there.
Updates, I know they've, they've already been working on some of that, I think it's down the line here, but I think it's going, something's going to happen. I think we're also waiting to see what happens with other cities and some of the great contracts. That's a real tricky piece to do the contract and do it well and do it right. I know when I've talked to some of the staff and walked into Jim's office, thank you for working on that, I'm sure we'll see something.
And then I had one other item.
I have passed this on.
Yes, okay.
And I've talked to county commissioner.
Yeah, just to let people know, the council has been inundated with, uh, requests from Wood Lake Point and Lake Shore Drive to put in a crosswalk between the two buildings to allow each group of seniors to cross over and, um, visit the activities on either side, either Wood Lake Nature Center, or Richfield Lake, or Pizza Luce, um, and this is on sixty-sixth Street. And my assumption is that this is something that will be referred to the Transportation Commission, my understanding is that's where it's going, so, um, I appreciate you sending us the cards, and we know you care, but you can save the thirty-four cents because we're on top of it, so...
Yes.
Um, you don't have to keep sending us, we get the message.
And county commissioner is too, and he says that he certainly will work with city of Richfield and looking at that and seeing what, what is the possibilities of that.
Yeah, so, so we appreciate hearing from you, and...
Yep, thank you for caring about your community.
Right, so, that was my third item.
Thanks, great. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the dovetail on what she talked about, the crosswalk, I actually went over and looked at it, watched it, and I do see their concern, because I do see where the bus stops are, and it's easier for seniors to go, and I do agree, it is about a block away, they got to walk to the, uh, stoplight, so, um, I did get your cards also, and I did watch it. Uh, I wanted to commend staff on the, uh, Portland Avenue Open House, it had a lot of great displays, I think everybody was there that could be there, uh, from staff perspective and the county and that, and, uh, a lot of people got a good chance to talk to them about why we're doing things certain ways and that, and we're actually, uh, one of the things tonight, we're going to have a, uh, somebody look at it, uh, we'll be hiring Evergreen, uh, Evergreen Land Services Company to look at the right-of-ways and that, and I hope that people understand, uh, council looked at this very heavily and wanted to minimize the impact on the, uh, citizens, and I think that has to be said, because we looked at aerial photographs and that and tried to reduce the amount of impact, but, uh, I think the good thing is we'll finally have a sidewalk on Portland that you can walk down and not be scared of walking down. And that, that is important, because I, I even walk once in a while. The other item I have, uh, it just came up on my email, um, I'm part of the NOC Committee, and we'll be doing what they call a MACGnomes Observation Event on, uh, it'd be this Friday at one PM, it's, uh, the council could come too, but what it is all about is, there's been some concerns about what are these noise-monitoring microphones you see out there are really valid. And as part of the NOC, we've asked that, we go out and validate that what they hear is actually aircraft, and they're reporting the right value. So, we are going out, uh, this Friday at one PM for one of our first ones, and actually go out and sit at the monitor, look at another monitor, look at the aircraft, and look at the data that comes in, to make sure that the information we're getting that's presented is true and correct. So it's just something we wanted to do, uh, as a group of cities, to validate, uh, the process and everything that's happening with the airport.
Make sure everything's working right, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
So, I'll be doing that this Friday, and I just wanted to let you guys know about that.
I think you're going to get good weather.
Let's hope. No snow, right?
You should have done it last Friday with the ten inches.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to add one thing, because we, we got a email too from one constituent who said that, why are we widening Portland? We are actually not widening Portland, we are actually narrowing it down, we are putting a more substantial, decent sidewalk, and, uh, we're putting it off the road bed, so if people are confused about what is going on there, we are not, we are not widening Portland, so that was a misconception on somebody's part, we're just trying to make it a nicer street. So, and it'll look a lot more like Seventy-sixth Street when people see it, so I think they'll like it a lot better. It'll be a smaller street, actually, so, I, I think that's the, move in the right direction. Um, I'd ask council approval of the agenda as it stands.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we have the consent calendar, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar, uh, contains several separate items which were acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items, uh, it would be necessary. Tonight, there's only three items on the consent calendar, and they start off with item A, which is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the reprogramming of funds from the two thousand thirteen Community Development Block Grant Allocation. Uh, item B is consideration of approval of the rejection of all bids submitted for the Sixty-Ninth Street Storm Sewer Project, and finally, item C is consideration of the approval of hiring Evergreen Land Services Company to provide right-of-way acquisition services for the Portland Avenue Reconstruction Project at a cost not to exceed one hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? Could city manager just say why we, we're going back for the bid on the, on item B?
Yes.
Clarify.
The, the storm sewer project, I mean, there is two ways to look at it, one, you could seal the joints, or you could, or replace the pipe. Uh, when Public Works looked at it, it, it seemed to us that the least expensive way would be to address the joints, and so when we got contracts in on that, uh, we found that it was astronomically more expensive than, than we thought it was going to be. And so, right now, Public Works is taking a look at it, uh, with the idea that probably replacing the pipes themselves is going to be cheaper. Uh, and if it's going to be cheaper, obviously, that's, uh, that's really a better way to go, um, so, we were, I know, I know Public Works Director Esling was surprised at how that turned out.
Yeah, so, well, thanks for watching our dollars.[1726.41]
be cheaper. And if it's going to be cheaper, obviously, that's, that's really a better way to go. So, we're, I know, I know Public Works Director Esling was surprised at how that turned out.
Yeah. So, well, thanks for watching our dollars. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, I gave you item seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Minnesota DNR to receive grant funds for the Taft Lake Fishery Project. And I see that, we got Jim up there and he's going to explain to us all about this great lake we have for fishing.
Well, good. I'll ask the technician to put the sight map on the screen. I believe that you have this in your packet. So, where this grant idea kind of got started from is, a couple of years ago, do you remember when a group of UFM students came and they worked on a number of projects, they presented them to you? Well, the Taft Lake Fishery was one of those projects and they gave us the great idea, the contact, the DNR, fishing in the neighborhood, the FIN program. And that really came from that group of students. And from there, we have planned a really pretty cool grant to fund a number of improvements to improve access to fishing at Taft Lake. So I've got, if you follow my cursor, Taft Lake's located in the very northeast corner of Richfield. Here is Highway 62 and it connects with Cedar Avenue, Highway 77, and the park sits right in that corner of the intersection. This is Bloomington Avenue that comes, comes down and, and there's a, there's a 12-acre lake that's been there a long time. It's a very deep lake and people have been fishing there for years and years. Those of you that grew up in fishing, or in Richfield, I bet you did fish this lake at some point in your youth. And you might have some very fond memories of that. So, what the grant is all about is improving access. And to do that, we've got a number of things planned. First, on this corner of the, of the lake, we're going to put in a boat launch. And that boat launch will enable you to carry a canoe or a kayak from the parking lot here right down into the lake. And to make that the best it can be, we're actually going to construct a dock that goes out there, a floating dock, that you bring your vessel out on the dock and then flip it over into the water as opposed to walking in the water and maybe tipping your canoe. I've done that before. Going further east is a picnic shelter that will accommodate families that will come there to fish together, larger families. We think a lot of people will be doing that, especially people that are coming from maybe a country that they're, they might not be into the traditional forms of recreation that other people are here, but they like to fish. And so we think that shelter will accommodate those groups during the day to spend time as families. Then, this is our existing, right here, this is our existing fishing pier. If you go out there now, you'll see very high railing. So the grant will enable us to lower the railings so that kids can cast over. And again, making it more successful. But perhaps the greatest thing of this grant are the installation of what we call fishing bricks. And you see a number of areas along the trail that have a little trail going down to the shoreline. And those trail, those bricks are platforms right on the water edge that you walk down to, you can stand with somebody else and cast. And it just gives you a better way to get down to the water and without impacting the shoreline. So I'm going to, I'm going to actually go to the next slide here. And this is the website for the Department of Natural Resources FIN program, the Fishing in the Neighborhood Program. And Taft Lake is featured on it. So there's a number of lakes within the metro area. And this website gives you all kinds of information about the lake. It tells you, it gives you a map of it, a contour map that I'll show you. Its depth, 45 feet. It tells you where the local bait shops are nearby. It gives you even a survey of fish that were actually collected and counted. It'll tell you what kind of fish is in there. And this is the contours of the lake. So, again, this is, there's a path that goes all the way around this, as you can see there. And then you can, you can just tell by the contours of the lake that pretty much anywhere from the shoreline, you can get a line out to almost any depth. And you can choose the depth that you want to cast at. And that's why these fishing platforms we're, we're putting around this lake are so innovative and important. A DNR official told us when we were writing the grant that we give grants out to improve accessibility. If you can do that, your chances of getting the grant are very high. And we think this will greatly improve the accessibility of getting people to the fish. And this is the fish that are actually collected in there. We did a survey in 2012. High on the list are black bullheads, which you might expect, but also high on the list is walleye. There's actually walleye in, in Taft Lake. And the average length is over a foot. And that's pretty cool. I mean, it's pretty cool to have that in an urban fishery. And then yellow perch, which is now coveted as much as walleye by many anglers because it's a, it's the family of a walleye. The perch is, comes from the same family as walleye. They taste like walleye. They're very good eating fish. So the DNR stocks this lake now, Taft Lake, they have for two years in a row. Yellow perch is the, it's mainly programmed for yellow perch. It's mainly suitable for that type of fish. Along with that, we stock northern pike. And the reason why is we want to bring those populations up because they'll feed on the bait fish. They'll feed on the smaller panfish, including the perch. And what that'll do is get fish, the panfish bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
And so it's a, it's a neat program. And we're excited about the grant and this resolution will put this in motion. We hear about it in May, and if we get the grant, we'll be actually constructing these amenities later on in the summer.
Oh, wow. You'll have to come back and let us know. Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you very much, Jim. I was there for the winter fishing contest. I think we're going to have to cut a bigger hole if we get bigger fish. It was really nice if you went on the lake. It was Home Depot, it was out there. I was there, I don't remember, do you remember what the turnout was? It was at least 60 people and I was there in the morning, but...
We had 125 people come. It was really cold. 125 kids. And I think out of 125, only eight fish were caught. Wasn't the right moon cycle or whatever, but didn't catch very many fish that day, but I'm glad you mentioned that because we've developed this remarkable partnership with Home Depot and the DNR. And we're putting on this great winter event. It was the second time we've done it in a year, or second time we've done it. And we're getting lots of kids out there that probably have never fished before, especially on the ice. So it's, it's a neat thing. It's, it just adds another component of recreation that makes our park system so complete. And to have an urban fishery is, is really a great thing for Richfield.
Thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion then that we approve the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to receive grant funds for the Taft Lake Fishery Project.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What a great project. Councilmember Sandel, can I ask you to do the consideration of appointments for us, please?
I would be happy to do that. We met earlier this evening with two potential candidates who were interested in serving on city commissions. The first one was Jeanette Centron de Nunez, and I would recommend her for her first choice, which was Community Services Commission. And then the second one was Christina Meyer, who was a Holy Angels 10th grader. And after checking with staff, I would recommend her for her, her second choice, which is Advisory Board of Health, with the option of applying for Human Rights Commission if in fact a vacancy occurs.
Okay. I will move that. I will second it. You moved it? Second. Any other discussion? These are great candidates. These are great candidates still coming in. There's still openings, so please, come on in. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And you want to talk about the openings?
I will. I'd be happy to. We have a number of openings on the Arts Commission and you don't have to be personally an artist. And the Arts Commission is broader than just visual arts. It include music, it could include drama. And also, they're looking for people who want to publicize these things, people who are energetic and interested in, in promoting arts in the city. So if you have any interest at all, please submit an application. You can go online on the city website and complete an application. We also have one additional opening for Community Services, a number for Friendship City, including a youth application, and two for the Human Rights Commission for adult members. So I would encourage anyone who has an interest in serving on the city commissions, please apply. I think you will discover they are great organizations, you meet new friends in Richfield, and you do really good work. And we take our commission recommendations very seriously. So you can encourage and, and affect what the city council does for your, for your community. So, please apply.
Thank you. City managers report.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I really don't have anything specific to report on. I would say that, of course, we've been for the past several weeks working very hard over at the legislature trying to get a couple of things passed. One is the, the strong beer and malt liquor wine sales for the ice arena for the Junior Hockey League team.
Thank you for going over there.
And I believe that's going to be included in the omnibus liquor bill and I'll be surprised if it, if it doesn't get passed. So that'll be, that would be wonderful. And of course, the mayor and I, along with others, have been working very hard to try and get funding for the underpass project. And I guess we'll see how that turns out.
Looking good. Okay, that's good. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Don't oppose that. Seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.